Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commissioner meeting for January 29th, 2024 is now in session. Would you stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
Pleasure allegiance, citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic of Britain, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, President of the Board this year. To my left is fellow Commissioner Jeff Benton and our Administrator Tracy Davies and our Deputy Administrator Eric Hostetler and, of course, our clerks Brandy and Jennifer. Let's begin.
Resolution number 24-58 in the matter of approving electronic record proceedings from regular meeting held January 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-58. Mrs. Lewis is absent today. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 24-59, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0126 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 0126.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-59. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-60, in the matter of approving travel expense requests.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-60. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-61, in the matter of approving the collective bargaining agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Emergency Medical Services, and the International Association of EMTs and Paramedics, local R711, NAGESEIU, SIRB case number 2023, MED 070542.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-61. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-62, in the matter of authorizing the use of a procurement card for the Facilities Department.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. We're actually increasing the spending limits on the three cards for maintenance specialists. With Randy's retirement, they're having to buy more stuff. And actually, just the cost of buying, when a woman has to go buy a motor for an HVAC unit, you know, the cost is just, we need to up their limit so they can purchase the stuff through the P-card and take advantage of that system.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion 24-62. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-63, in the matter of approving a service agreement by and between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Progressive Solutions Incorporated for equipment, materials, and installation of distributed antenna system at the Bixby Campus.
So moved.
Second discussion.
This is for the existing building out at the Bixby Complex. It's a radio booster for emergency radios. They did a study during construction and the problem, the building, the existing building has problems large due to, there's actually two roots on that structure. So with that, based off that study, this proposal will come in and put antennas to do the booster of the radio signals for emergency responders.
So the reception will be improved?
This does not address the cell phones.
Oh, it does not?
No. This is just for the emergency responders. We'll come, we'll address, after we get this taken care of, we'll address the cellphone.
I assume it's probably going to take care of both.
It doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't, I wish, unfortunately, it does not take care of both.
When's it going to be done, John?
They were ready to mobilize. I'm not exactly sure how long it'll take to run all the antenna wires and stuff throughout the building, so.
Okay. But soon?
Yes. They'll start right away.
Okay.
Questions, comments, authors, vote?
Vote on motion 24-63. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-64, in the matter of approving a professional services agreement by and between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and DLZ Architecture Incorporated for professional design services for renovations of the county facilities at 109 North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio, for the purpose of Delaware County Public Defender's Office.
So moved.
Second discussion.
So we had DLZ do the space study, looking at the Carnegie Building and the Hayes Building, and off of that, we're looking at moving the public defenders over into the 109 building where regional planning was. DLZ has taken some, we've had some meetings with public defenders, DLZs, they have a basic layout, so this will do all the design, construction documents, and construction administration to renovate that for, accommodate public defenders in that building.
And we're going to beat Commissioner Benton. Time frame for this?
They are really ready to move. We hope to have the design just done in probably six weeks, get it out to bid, hopefully have all the work done by summer.
Other questions, comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-64. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-65, in the matter of approving supplemental appropriations for the Prosecutor's Office.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Ford with the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. We are requesting a supplemental appropriation for some unexpected expenses that we've incurred this year. Our fridge has started to leak and Facilities has tried to repair it, but with the age of it and the damage that it can be caused from the leaking, they have suggested that we replaced it. We were able to find a great deal for one for $548 through Menards. Also, our shredder that was purchased back in 2012 has decided to quit working, and again, Facilities did look at that and said it was beyond repair. And unfortunately, we do have to purchase a certain type of shredder that meets our grant guidelines, and so that expense is $2,205.83. And we are requesting supplemental amount to pay for these unexpected expenses.
As I was noting, a budget, unexpected. Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-65. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Resolution number 24-66, in the best legislation of necessity for purchase or lease of motor vehicles for the use of the Delaware County Dog Warden.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Navi, Director of Finance. This request would authorize the replacement of two existing vehicle leases for the County Dog Warden's office.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-66. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-67, in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriations for the self-insured workers' comp fund.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Thanks, Commissioners. This secondary request for a transfer of appropriations is attributed to the purchase of a lift for the Record Center, and this will be paid for from a grant from the Ohio BWC.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-67. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-68, in the matter of approving the DKMM County Recycling and Litter Prevention Office Program Final Status Report for 2023.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Jennifer Way Young, Keep Delaware County Beautiful Delaware Public Health District. This past year, we had a phenomenal compost bucket drop-off program. Price Farms Organics estimates that our residents who used the bucket program dropped off 15 tons of food scrap for the year, which is, I thought was over the top. I couldn't believe it was that much. We received a pilot program award from Keep Ohio Beautiful for this compost bucket drop-off program. So that was pretty, pretty nice. We had the DKMM Electronics drop-off, in which we collected nine tons of materials this past spring. Our string light program just ended, and we collected an estimated 3,600 pounds of string lights, which is about on par, little bit more, I think, than last year. We participated in a lot of public events, included the Olentangie River Fest, Earth at the Columbus Zoo, Stratford Harvest Fair, and along with the Delaware Public Health District, we distributed recycling information at the PAL Festival, Harlem Fall Festival, the Delaware County Fair, and more. I worked with the Delaware City Schools and the City of Delaware to begin a pilot recycling program at the elementary schools. We held the Great American Cleanup, and we had 523 volunteers that collected 5,185 pounds of litter. So that was, that was great. And then the Olentangie River Cleanup, we had $55, 55 volunteers, and we collected 700 pounds of litter. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond my control, we could not have a Sayota River sweep this past year. So hoping to be back on that again this year.
Okay. Questions or comments? Appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Call for vote.
Vote on motion 24-68. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
For item number 13, you are considering the paper that is in front of you, had a couple corrections on it before we vote. Resolution number 24-69, in the matter of approving supplemental appropriations, a transfer of cash and returning cash advances.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. This resolution involves a few of our federal aid road projects. You're probably aware we need to account for those expenses and the revenues separately. That's essentially what this resolution does, cleans up the accounting and closes out these project accounts.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-69. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-70, in the matter of approving a real estate agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation for the Sundary Parkway Interchange Dell 71-8.91 Phase A.
So moved.
Second discussion.
As you know, we've been working with ODOT on the 7136 interchange project. ODOT has asked for approval of this real estate agreement. I would, just a couple of highlights. ODOT will be providing funding for the right-of-way acquisition and the utility relocation. So the amount you see in the agreement here is being provided by ODOT. Technically, the county would be responsible for any cost above and beyond that, but ODOT has said they would be willing to, if costs do exceed that amount, they will go back and see if additional funding is available, but they aren't able to, they aren't able to appropriate that money right now. So this will let us move forward with the acquiring the necessary property, get the, there is a electric transmission line that will have to be relocated for Phase A of the project. And again, this only involves Phase A, which is the ramps and the bridge over 71 for the project.
And the extension of Wilson Road to the south?
Correct.
That's part of Phase A, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I thought. So this does include utility relocations?
It does.
As needed?
Yes.
Well, it's a project that we need to move forward on, and not for us that ODOT will fill in the gap should there be one.
Yeah. It's good to see, and this is, obviously, we've all talked about this a lot for a lot of years, a very, very important project for a whole bunch of reasons, and it's good to see this project moving along. So thanks to you, thanks to ODOT, you know, we're, hopefully, get this thing going, get the second interchange construction started in '25. Is that the?
That is the plan now. It'll take probably close to a year to get the right-of-way utilities moved, but as of now, the schedule is to start construction probably third quarter of 2025.
Okay. How long would that take, Rob? This is a big project.
Probably 15 months. The bridge itself will take quite a bit of time. The roadway, there's nothing particularly difficult about, but it will take some time working over a freeway. There'll be some diversions and short-term closures when they set the beams over the freeway, but, yeah.
Good question, comments? Call for vote?
Vote on motion 24-70. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-71, in the matter of awarding a bid and approving a contract between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Brenstall Construction Incorporated for the Miller William Homes Number Two Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second discussion.
This is the petition project located in Genoa Township, just downstream from the Laneta Lane Improvement. We received two bids. The low bid was from Brenstall Construction. They did come in under the engineer's estimate, so we are able to award this project. Just as an aside, we'll be opening bids on the Laneta Lane rebid tomorrow, and so we certainly hope bidders will sharpen their pencil a little bit and get good bids on that one as well.
Questions or comments? This one, vote?
Vote on motion 24-71. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-72, in the matter of authorizing the submitting of an application for the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency?
So moved.
Second discussion.
So the Ohio EPA has a program, they are currently providing grant funds to local agencies to help in an effort to reduce chloride runoff into waterways, and one of the major contributors to that is our de-icing operations during the winter. We are asking for your approval to apply for grant funds through this program to purchase a pretreatment system for one of our trucks, basically the tank and the distributor to do the pre-treating you see when we spray brine on the roads before the storm. That does a couple of things. That's, that's kind of the state of the industry right now. First off, it buys you time, or buys us time, once the snow begins to fall, gives you an hour to, two hours, depending on how hard it's snowing, to get trucks mobilized and get out and spread the salt. But secondly, it reduces the amount of salt you end up using because it prevents the ice and the snow from sticking to the pavement. And so that's, that's really the purpose of this, this grant, is to reduce the amount of salt we're using and save us money in the process.
The county our size will, will one day, will be enough, or it'll...
So we already have one pretreatment truck set up, but we could really use a second covering as much road mileage as we have, so that, I think this would be a good thing.
Questions, comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-72. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-73, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet?
So moved.
Second discussion.
Just five routine utility installation permits for you today.
Questions, comments, vote?
Vote on motion 24-73. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-74, in the matter of certification of delinquent accounts to the county auditor for accounts to be assessed to payable year 2025 taxes.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Eric McPeak, Deputy Director of Operations for the Sewer District. The first item we have is for certification of delinquent accounts. The total from August, September, and October of last year is $201,000. We're continuing to increase our follow-up with delinquent customers and commercial accounts. We've also increased our efforts to encourage customers to sign up for automatic payments. Right now, we're at 25% of the customers who are signed up for automatic payments.
This number looks a little bigger than past averages?
It is, actually, yes. I think the last couple were 172,000, 189, yeah, so it's a little bit more. The percentage of accounts that this encompasses is a little bit higher. It's 4.75% of our total accounts. All of last year's was in the 4% range, but lower than that, so it's slightly higher.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-74. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
We're going to attempt to pull up track it for the Director's Environmental Services and Regional Sew District Monthly Report.
Is that showing on her screen?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can see it. We had it. Okay. I think I might have it, Jennifer. Keep losing it. It's not a good connection. You've got to hold it just right.
I can, yeah, but if we got to find the email first for her to... Okay. Do you have the email?
Do we want to just talk through it today, or do we want to defer it till the next meeting?
Do you have, do you have a printed version of it?
I do not have a printed version of it.
Any reason we can't just defer this till the next meeting?
I don't see any reason. I'll leave it up to you all on the side.
Do we have it?
No, that's the right one.
That's the right one?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
If you just want to, I'll just click through the numbers, if you just, if you don't mind doing that, that way you don't have to input anything. Okay, so the development update, we don't have any plan approvals this month. Going through at the moment. The first item is Cheshire Woods, Section 4, Phase A. This is 34 single-family home lots by Homewood, south of Cheshire Road, east of 71. This is actually, was already approved in 2020, so this is a renewal of that approval. That's what this item is. Liberty Grand District, Section 10, this is 38 single-family MI homes. Howard Farms is Homewood subdivision, south of Cheshire Road, west of Old State Road, and that's 17 single-family homes there. Rosawood Village is the next one. This will be in the NCA. It's 208 apartment units by Metro, near Sawmill and Clarkshaw Road. And then the Jennings Sports Park by the, the railroad tracks over by Pyatt, soccer and baseball fields, along with two concession stands. This was, again, it was on hold for a little while, so this is an extension on that approval for the agreement for that one. And then we have four groups of sewers accepted. Evans Farm Marketplace West, Section 2 and 3, two commercial buildings on the west side of Evans Farm Drive. Commercial lot, Hidden Ravines Crossing Phase 1. I believe this is the BJ's store that is open now. Olentangie Elementary School Number 2. Sanit, this is for a sanitary extension to the elementary school, the corner of Pyatt and Peach Blow. And then the last item for sewers accepted is Sayota Meadows South. That's 24 units on the south side of Home Road, and that's Chris Vince, developer on that one. And that is the whole list that we have today.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Appreciate the update, as you guys do a great job every month.
Staying busy. Yes, absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Apologize for the delay.
No problem.
Nothing seems to be working today. We have a few minutes before we can start our 10 o'clock hearing, so we do have item number 21 on page 102 that we may address. Resolution number 24-75, in the matter of approving of Resuscitation Quality Improvement Program Master Service Agreement by and between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners to Delaware County Emergency Medical Services and RQI Partners LLC.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm going to bring up this, Mike McKean, Assistant Chief for Harlem Township as well. In front of you, Jeff Fischel, Director of VMS Delaware County. In front of you, you have a resolution to court agreement between Delaware County and RQI. I'm going to let Chief McKean do most of the talking on, on this, as he did most of the legwork to bring it here. But I will say that this was something that was brought to the Pre-Hospital Care Board, the Pre-Hospital Care Board voting unanimously to bring it to you for approval, and essentially what it will do is, for every agency that participates, it'll kind of equalize training and certifications for our CPR, ACLS, and PAL's classes across the county. But like I said, Chief McKean did most of the, or he did do the legwork to bring it to the county, so I would like for him to speak on that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. We're very happy with the RQI. Some of my experience with it in the past, Delaware City uses it, City of Columbus uses it. It's a benefit to the residents of the county in the fact that it improves our performance for our training, as Director Fischel said. As opposed to doing training once every two years, they do it every quarter. The training device gives them immediate feedback as they're doing it. It also, it's beneficial to both paramedics and basics. Everybody does CPR. It does have an advanced level for paramedics. From a financial standpoint to the townships that are participating, it helps them immensely too, because it eliminates overtime, so it's a financial benefit to the county as well. So we thank you for your support and appreciate this opportunity.
Questions or comments?
No, Jeff, Jeff and I corresponded earlier about the background of this program. It sounds like it's good, promising, but with positive experience. I mean, that's the point I think you've made, is that you have experienced using it.
Yes, sir. So prior to my position here, I worked for the City of Columbus for 30 years, and when City of Columbus initiated it, I saw a very noticeable improvement in how we treated some of our patients, especially those in cardiac arrest. I thought it was a great benefit, and like I said, the financial benefit on the backside to the departments. It eliminates overtime to have members go through that training, but doing it more consistently, it's a huge benefit.
Now, has Harlem used this?
Harlem has not. Delaware City does.
Okay.
Like I said, I gained my experience while working for the City of Columbus. But, so that was my driver with bringing it here to the county, presenting it to the Pre-Hospital Care Board and everybody else. We did a demonstration at Delaware City with theirs, and I think that's where everybody really saw the benefit of it, and seeing how it works and operates.
Yeah, I think the life that will be saved that we can't identify today because of this program, or lives...
Yeah, yeah, sometimes this, I won't say it's immeasurable, but sometimes you really don't know until it happens. I can tell you that recently, not to get too off-subject, but they just had an incident in Hawaii where a council member went into cardiac arrest in a section...
You looked at me when you said, "Have a good one."
Well, it was a council member, yes.
I've, I've played it.
But there was EMS and fire, and everybody in the room, as it happened, and that individual immediately got CPR and AED, and it hit all of the steps of the fast response to an individual in cardiac arrest, and that member survived.
There we go.
And I believe we're using dollars from soft billing to pay for this, is that correct, or indirectly, or?
Indirectly.
Yeah.
Should it be all managed by the Pre-Hospital Care Board? The agreement, the fund, the, I mean, obviously, the county funds helps fund the Pre-Hospital Care Board, which will pay these.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And that way, all the districts will participate.
Yeah, okay. And that way, all the districts will participate.
Everybody, everybody who's in the Pre-Hospital Care Board is participating. Everybody in the county, because as I said, it'll benefit EMTs, even those that do it as first responders were made aware of it. Maybe now, once we get it in here, maybe others will see it and then choose to participate down the road, and it will grow from there.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Call for vote.
Hold on, motion two-four-seven-five. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's ten o'clock. Want to go ahead and do reports, or we just want to go into the hearing?
It might be better if you could do reports first, because we're still having some technical difficulties.
Okay. Administrator Tracy, have you been?
Good morning Commissioners, Tracy Davies, County Administrator. Just wanted to mention that Tiffany Megg and I, along with some other members of regional sewer staff, were able to attend a 208 sewer planning meeting with all of the county sewer providers. EPA and Morpsy are collaboratively working to update the 208 plan. Last time that sewer plan was done was in 2006. And that's all I have.
Things have changed a little bit since 2006.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has.
Eric, have you been?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Benton?
Just a couple things. We have a Land Bank board meeting this afternoon. Land Bank continues to make really good progress on demolition projects that could be funded through grants from the Ohio Department of Development. It's spread around the county. Word's getting out that there is this funding available this year or next. And we have, I don't know, maybe ten projects that look like they will get funding through this program. We also have our first and large brownfield remediation project, which is out in Toyota Township on the west side. Because there is funding available for brownfield remediation projects as well, guaranteed to each county. And good to see that the word is getting out there and these projects are being dealt with, and this funding is available. City of Delaware is taking the lead administrative role in this, and they're doing an outstanding job. I want to give a shout-out to Diane Gunther, who is the primary person administering these grants. They're tricky, and she's doing a great job of getting them done. We had our legislative update meeting Friday. That went very well. Talked a lot about the eclipse coming up on April 8th and all the preparations for that. But again, it was a good, good meeting. Appreciate Senator Brenner and Representative Lear being there and having a good, open dialogue about what's going on and what our concerns are. We had a subco board meeting scheduled for Friday morning, but we had technical difficulties, and I was not able, there were about four or five of us that were doing it remotely and weren't able to participate, so I'm going to catch up on that this week with Mike Kendall, the executive director. And then lastly, I received the news I'll be the honorary chair of the Ohio Wesleyan University Mock Convention this year, in April. So it's, or in February, I mean. It's fun. It's an imitation of the National Presidential Convention. And I get to, I get to help present.
I've been asked to speak at it.
Have you? Okay, good, good.
So...
It's a lot of fun. I did it eight years ago, and...
I've never participated in one before.
Yeah, it's, you know, the students come, attend, and really have a mock convention. And they nominate various candidates for president and vice president, and they have a good time with it. It's very well attended. They give speeches, they have balloons, they have all sorts of interesting get-up that goes along with it. And it is, it's a lot of fun. Last time they nominated, it was the 2016 convention, they nominated John Kasich to be their candidate, and they nominated John Senna to be the vice president candidate. So they kind of have fun with it. I don't know, does everybody know who John Senna is? He's a, I don't know how you describe John Senna. He's an action star, kind of?
Sina, John Sina.
The what?
Sina.
Sina?
Yes.
What did I say?
Senna.
Senna, oh, Sina, sorry. But how do you describe?
Finanization, I don't know.
But he's a celebrity, and they just had a lot of fun with it, nominated him to be the vice president candidate, so.
Very well.
That's all I got.
Real quickly, Commissioner Benton mentioned the legislative meeting. We're fairly long, it's a long meeting, a couple hours. And we've met, we will not be meeting for the next couple months, just because we'll discuss till April. And regional planning was Thursday night, which I attended, and has already been mentioned, the Land Bank meeting this afternoon at 1:30. With that, I believe we're ready. Jennifer, when you're ready.
So Eric, how would you describe John Senna?
I knew he was wrestler, but now he's doing everything.
Okay. Wrestler, did he ever do mixed martial arts or anything like that?
I don't know.
No, he never did.
He never did?
A couple of other wrestlers have, but I don't think he ever did.
Somebody would know. Good to know. I just knew he was famous. I didn't know exactly.
Bottom line, he's not our vice president.
Yeah, he didn't get the nomination at the national level.
All right, it is ten-oh-sevenish, and we are getting ready to start the public hearing for consideration of the Moore Number One, Number 361 Watershed Drainage Improvement Petition filed by Jose Romero and Anissa Stevano Romero and others. And Commissioner Merrill, you have a sheet.
With that, I will kind of read what I will call the game plan, the rules that we'll be following today. First of all, welcome everybody here to participate in this hearing. First hearing for consideration of the Moore Number One, Number 361 Drainage Improvement Petition. There's a sign and sheet circulating in the room, and we ask that you please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. Now, here's a review of what we'll be doing today. We will hear a report from the County Engineer in Soil and Water Conservation District. And there's copies available of the report, I believe, outside. Following the presentation, there will be a time for questions from the board. After board questions, the board will hear from any interested owners that wish to testify. Those speaking for or against the petition must be either an owner, as defined by in Section 6131.01 of the Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner. And I can't emphasize that enough. Owner or attorney speaking on behalf, no exceptions. Before accepting testimony for or against the petition, the board will acknowledge receipt of any landowner-written testimony before hearing live testimony. And I'll make that ask in just a moment. We will first call on those wishing to testify in favor of the petition. We will then call on those wishing to testify in opposition to the petition. Before testifying, you'll be asked to take an oath. And after all those wishing to testify for or against the petition have been heard, there will be an opportunity for responsive or rebuttal testimony. The board will close the public hearing after all testimony and evidence has been presented. After listening to testimony and the report of the engineer, the board will decide whether to proceed with the survey and design or dismiss the petition. The board must consider the following factors in making its decision. Whether proposed improvement is necessary, whether proposed improvements will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvements will be less than the benefits improvements provides. If the board proceeds with the petition, the Delaware County Engineer will bear plans, reports, and individual schedules of assessments for the project. When plans are complete, a final hearing will be set. Notification to the hearing will be given to the landowners, and the board will consider the project on that date. With that, I first, do we have any written?
We do not have written testimony, but if Martin Zilka is present today, he will have videos and pictures for us.
Very well. And you're prepared for that?
Yes, I hope so. We're trying.
We got our figures though. With that, I'll turn it over, introduce yourself, and provide the report.
Good morning Commissioners, Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Soil and Water Conservation District. I will read the first hearing report into the record and then be happy to answer any questions the board has. First hearing report, Moore Number One, Number 361 Watershed Drainage Petition per ORC 6131, January 29th, 2024. This report has been prepared for the preliminary hearing on a drainage improvement petition filed by Jose Romero, Anissa Stevano Romero, and others on July 24th, 2023. The original petition has been signed by six individuals representing five of the thirty parcels in the watershed. The course and termini of the requested improvements are quoted from the petition as follows. In Delaware County, Concord Township, within the Moore Number One, Number 361 watershed, and generally following, but not limited to, the course and termini of existing improvements. The following is the nature of the work requested, as quoted from the petition. To generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface, to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required and/or creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this petition. Petition process. This petition has been submitted according to Section 6131 of the Ohio Revised Code, which authorizes the Board of Commissioners to act on behalf of benefited property owners to make drainage improvements. If the Board of Commissioners decides to proceed with the project, the costs related to the improvements in the development of plans, reports, and schedules are assessed to the landowners in the watershed according to the benefit received to their watershed acreage. These special assessments will be added to the property taxes for each property and can be spread over a maximum of a fifteen-year period. Property owners may also choose to pay their assessment in a lump sum payment prior to placement on their property taxes. Additionally, the improvements will be placed on the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program in perpetuity per ORC Section 6137, and the annual maintenance assessment will appear on property tax statements as a special assessment in the same manner as the construction assessments. These annual maintenance assessments are generally in the range of two to five percent of the construction assessment. The decision to approve a petition project is a three-step process. First, a viewing of the proposed improvement is conducted for the Commissioners to familiarize themselves with the watershed and general conditions. The Commissioners conducted the viewing for this project by drone video on November 13th, 2023. Next, a preliminary hearing is held to consider the initial feasibility of the proposal. It is this preliminary first hearing that is before us today. If this petition is approved, a final hearing will be conducted to further consider this petition. At that time, final details such as engineering plans and specifications, cost estimates, and a proposed schedule of assessments will be known. Existing conditions. The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District and Delaware County Engineers Office have made the following observations of the watershed using onsite evaluation and a review of available historic records, aerial photography, topographic mapping, soils mapping, and drone video. The Moore Number One, Number 361 watershed, as defined for this hearing, measures approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-three acres. The current land uses in the watershed are predominantly agricultural and rural residential. Improvements have been made in the watershed utilizing the drainage petition process in 1913. These improvements appear to consist of subsurface drainpipe installation only. The existing drainage system east or downstream of State Route 745 is comprised of narrow open channel that is heavily covered with brush and woody vegetation, a broad surface drainage swale that appears to lack a defined shape or channel, and a subsurface drainpipe designed for the agricultural needs of the watershed. The outlet for the subsurface drainpipe was not able to be identified. The existing drainage system west or upstream of State Route 745 is comprised of grassed waterway, farmed surface drain swale, and a subsurface drainpipe. No significant degradation in the drainage system has been observed in this portion of the watershed. The drainage system east of State Route 745 does not appear to be functioning at optimum capacity due to a lack of comprehensive maintenance and the generally deteriorated condition of the infrastructure. The lack of a defined surface drainage swale and fully functional open channel has led to increased out-of-bank flows and the accumulation of debris along the length of the channels. The lack of an identifiable outlet for the subsurface drainpipe indicates the possibility the system may not be meeting the standards for good agricultural and rural residential drainage. These conditions are indicators of an overburdened, unmaintained, and aged drainage infrastructure. While the existing drainage system still provides some degree of drainage benefit, it does not appear to function as a good and sufficient outlet. Estimate of cost factors favorable unfavorable benefit versus cost. ORC 6131 requires the County Engineer to state in a report factors favorable and unfavorable to a proposed project, estimate the cost of the project, and state an opinion as to whether the benefits of the project exceed the cost. The following information is presented for your consideration. Construction estimate. The proposed project would begin on or near the outlet of the existing open channel to O'Shaughnessy Reservoir and extend upstream to the east right-of-way for State Route 745. The major items of work would include open channel reconstruction, surface drain shaping and grading, subsurface drainpipe replacement, clearing of brush and vegetation, seeding and mulching of disturbed areas, installation of private drive culverts, and the installation of erosion control measures. Project estimate, construction, seventy-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-eight dollars. Project administration, survey, and engineering, ten percent of the construction estimate, seven-thousand-three, seven-thousand-thirty-six dollars and eighty cents. Drainage maintenance, first-year startup, three-thousand-five-hundred-eighteen dollars forty cents. Total project estimate, eighty-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-three dollars twenty cents. Notes. It is important to understand that the above estimates are preliminary and made in the absence of a current detailed topographic survey of the project area. The above estimate does not contain a contingency amount. The amount of necessary contingency would be evaluated as part of the survey and engineering design of the project and added to the estimate presented at the final hearing. Contingency cost is typically estimated at fifteen to twenty percent of the final construction estimate. As an example, a fifteen percent contingency would add approximately twelve thousand to the construction estimate. Should the project fail to be approved at the final hearing, the benefiting landowners, as defined by ORC 6131, may still be responsible for the cost of project administration, survey, and engineering design. Assessments. If the project moves forward to the second hearing, the Ohio Revised Code instructs the County Engineer to calculate the assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received from the improvements for the various properties in the watershed. ORC 6131 states that, quote, "Uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other man-made causes shall be considered as benefited by an improvement required to dispose the accelerated flow of water from the uplands." Benefits are further defined by the ORC as elimination or reduction of damage from flood, removal of water conditions that jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, and increased value of land resulting from the improvement. It should be noted that property owners are only assessed for those improvements that are located downstream from their properties. No property is assessed for improvements located upstream. The public agencies that own rights of way for public roads and other public lands are also assessed for both construction and maintenance costs in the same manner as private property owners. Individual parcel assessments are not calculated for the preliminary hearing and are only calculated if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. Factors favorable unfavorable. Factors favorable to the improvement. Improved surface and subsurface drainage in the watershed. Improved outlet for subsurface drainage components of household sewage treatment systems and for residential drainage systems. Reduction of future deterioration of surface and subsurface drainage infrastructure. Annual inspections, maintenance, and protection of the improvement in perpetuity. Factors unfavorable to the improvement. Temporary land use disruption during construction. Cost of construction and maintenance may be a burden to some landowners. Removal of existing trees and brush in the improvement area. Benefits versus cost. Assessments for property within the watershed are calculated based on the contribution to and benefits derived from the improved drainage system. For a project of this nature, it would be reasonable to consider the increased value of the land that would result from an improved drainage outlet. In this area, an improved outlet would allow for stormwater drainage to efficiently flow through the area to a good and sufficient outlet. Also, for residential properties, the lack of an adequate drainage outlet can negatively impact the condition of household sewage treatment systems, potentially limiting the value of the home for resale. Should the existing system fail, the cost to perform repairs or construct an alternate sewage treatment system can range from the thousands to tens of thousands of dollars. It would also be reasonable to consider the cost of environmental degradation due to residential sewage treatment systems that may not be functioning properly. Other benefits that are commonly perceived as a result of drainage improvements focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities that have planned and maintained stormwater drainage infrastructures generally have higher resale values than those communities that are known to have a history of drainage problems or flooding. Conclusions. Based on all of the information gathered and generated for this project, I believe this project is technically feasible and would adequately serve the project area's drainage needs. The testimony brought to the board of the, brought to the board by the landowners, however, as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the cost, should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project. Should the current petition be approved to proceed to a final hearing, the petition bond will be returned, and detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and a schedule of assessments would be prepared. Additionally, a benefit versus cost analysis will also be performed to further determine the feasibility of advancing this proposed project.
Thank you Brett. With that, any questions from fellow board members?
Yeah, I, okay, I got a couple of questions for you Brett. First of all, the-
First of all, this, this is different because the ditch dumps into the reservoir. Are there any issues with the reservoir, getting reservoir approval, or access or anything?
At this point, I do not anticipate having to do work on the city of Columbus ground. If that, if survey, if the board approves the project to go to the survey and design phase, and we would find that necessary, we would certainly open a dialogue with the city's watershed management office and explore that.
Okay, okay.
I don't anticipate it at this point, though.
Again, and like we talked before, most of the watershed looks like it's agricultural. Significant majority, maybe eighty, eighty-five percent, something like that, so, again, just an observation, because that does kind of change the dynamics of it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I hear from you later. With that, we will move into testimony. And first, we will hear from those who support the petition. And you'll be asked to give, provide your name and your address and your parcel number if you have it, and then I will swear you in, and then you will have the opportunity to give your testimony. So with that, all, anyone who would like to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Can you come forward? Again, provide your name and your address and the parcel number if you know it.
My name is Martin Zilka. The address is five nine two five Dublin Road. And as far as a parcel number, I don't know. But I am directly east of Jose's house.
We can identify a map number.
Commissioners, I believe it's parcel number nine.
Number nine, good.
Yeah, it looks like it.
And what was your address again? I didn't write.
Five nine two five.
Okay. With that, let me swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
Okay, the, the problem we have with this drainage is that a lot of the sediment from the farmland is accumulated into the pipes, and it's also accumulated into Jose's lot. And if you look at the picture, you can see about eight inches of clearance on the two pipes, I think, and Brett may correct me, but I think those are thirty-inch drainage culverts, maybe twenty-four, but they're pretty big. And they're filled with sediment. And, you know, eight years ago, they were, they were almost fully open, there was like two inches of sediment in there. And so that's what it looks like on Jose's side, on the eastern side of the road. I've got the next one. I just took a couple of pictures to document it. These are pictures that Jose had, and this was after a severe storm. Was that last year or two years ago?
That was last year.
Last year. And that's, that's what his lot looks like. And that, that was just a couple, a couple of weeks ago, where we haven't had really strong rain, but you could see it filled up, and it was a small, one of those videos, is that a video?
There are a couple of videos.
Yeah, and that's, that's it coming from the farmland. And that wasn't a severe storm. I think two years ago, we had saturated ground and a heavy rain, and the water was coming over the road, which is a severe safety hazard. We had hills, hills to the north, and it's a slight hill to the south. So if the water's on the road and you're at night, you won't see it. So you can, you can, and it's fifty-five mile an hour, so you can be flying through there, and then all of a sudden hit some, hit some water. So that's a, that's a safety hazard, in my opinion. And the only, the only other thing I have to add is there's a cottonwood tree that's right next to the culvert, and I'm sure the roots are in that culvert. So I would say take that cottonwood down. It's grown into the wires on the road. I think it's a telephone wire, because I don't think anybody cares. So that's about all I have to say.
The water doesn't appear to be moving in that.
In the culvert?
Yeah.
It wasn't raining real hard. There was, you could tell there was water and there was a flow, but, well, the, the amount of sediment that's accumulated there, you know, it's like twelve to fifteen inches. And the same with Jose's yard. That was at one time a nice ditch, and it would flow, and it's just spread real good topsoil.
Do you have anything else?
That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, then. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the project, please come forward.
I'm Jose Renaro. Lot, or my address is fifty-nine twenty-one Dublin Road. My house is just east of Marty's house. It was my lot that he was referring to in those pictures.
Yeah, you're west.
Yeah, I'm just west of Marty's house.
Okay. With that, if you'll raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
I moved into the house roughly five or seven years ago. The house didn't have any of the drainage issues it has now. Over the course of that time, I have pictures that I forgot to send showing what the properties looked like initially. We have stone around our trees. When I initially moved into the house, all that stone was above the ground. Now, most of that is below the ground due to sediment from the runoff from the drainage off of the culvert. It's over the course of the five years that I've lived on the property, the property has flooded so bad that it's gone over the road at least twice. Over that timeframe, one car has wrecked onto our property because of that water. I feel that any improvement to that watershed would, would improve the water flow to, to the river. It's, the water has gotten so bad recently that the water's getting closer and closer to my actual property. The one picture that Marty had showed the water within five feet of my back porch. I have a lockout basement on that, for that back porch. So that back porch is, like I said, that stone was within five feet of that water flow, that he, of that picture that he showed. Recently, over the last couple of days, the actual culvert hasn't drained out at all. That water that he showed with the roughly six, six to eight inches of opening on the culvert has not gone down since the rains, since the, the rain and humid, and the mist started. Everything along that ditch from one end of my property, from where the culvert is, all the way to where the driveway is of the next lot is all saturated. You're not able to walk through that without maybe a good four to five, two to three inches of water there. That's all I have to say. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm one of the ones who actually started the petition, me and my wife. Like I said, any improvement would help out greatly as far as the drainage of the water.
The, the two pipes, the picture of the two pipes that we saw under the road, is that on your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, does it back up on the west side of the road? Have you seen flooding over there?
Their end is a longer, it's a, probably a eight or nine-foot ditch off of theirs, and it backs up probably another twenty feet onto the farm. So it, it does, that portion does flood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in support of the petition? I will ask that twice. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in support of the petition? Okay, we will now move to those who would like to speak in opposition to the petition. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Give us your name and your address.
Jeff Terry, six zero one one Dublin Road. And I think I'm number fifteen on the map.
Okay, very well. Raise your right hand, swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
Okay. I've lived there thirty-some years, and, yeah, it floods over there probably at least once a year, if not more. But my, I guess my opposition is I have no benefit from the, any work that's going to be done myself, and I counted at least twenty of these lots to the south of where they are. That won't really receive any benefit from it, because our drainage doesn't go over that way. It goes pretty much east and doesn't go down until it gets past their properties. And then I'm concerned that if you do the research and repairs now, all this land to the west will be developed sometime soon. It's already been, I think, plotted out for subdivisions with another road going in there. So my concern is all that extra water that will be coming from it when it gets developed. I guess that's my only statement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Brett, I'll have some questions for you once we get through here. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Again, I'll ask twice. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Brett, if you will come forward. The comment which we hear frequently is to note benefit, we'd like to explain the state perspective on that.
Sure, yes. State law is very specific in that if water exits a property, enters an improvement constructed under the drainage petition law, we are to consider them as benefited. It goes as far as to use the word "shall be considered as benefited," which does not give us a lot of room for interpretation. To the gentleman's point, I will make the statement, we have not done any determination as far as where drainage from a particular property may enter the proposed improvement. As I stated in the report, no property is assessed for improvements located upstream of where the drainage comes off of their property. It is very possible that the drainage coming off those properties to the south of the petitioner's properties and in the cluster of properties that I believe his, his lies in may enter the improvement well downstream, and then they would only be assessed on the cost of the improvements for that section of the project. So those are all things that we look at as part of final report and plan preparation, and we look at every parcel individually to make that assessment.
And if they were not in the watershed, then they would not be included.
That is correct. That's also a very, I'm glad you raised that point, Commissioner Merrill. The watershed that has been drawn at, for this stage of the process, is done completely using remote sense data. We've done no onsite investigation or evaluation or verification of that watershed line. That is something we would do as part of engineering design, and if we would determine that a property that we had as part of the watershed at this stage does not, in fact, drain into the project, they would simply be not part of the project at the final hearing stage.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask Commissioner Bennett, is there anyone who has, thank you. Is there any rebuttal testimony? We don't want to be redundant, if there's anything you'd like to add from what you heard. This is your opportunity to do that.
I'll add one point.
Come back forward. And I remind you, you have been sworn in.
Yes.
Yes, you asked if there was flooding in the farmland. Well, when the water's going over the road, there's obviously flooding right there in that.
That's what I figured, it probably backs up over there.
Yeah, so it does occur, but it doesn't affect that farmland a lot. And another thing I wanted to mention is that when they plant corn, the cornstalks end up in Jose's yard and also plug the, plug the tiles, so I'm glad.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett, do you have anything you want, any questions or anything you want to add?
I have no further questions. Again, appreciate everyone participating in the testimony and the report, Brett.
Okay, with that, again, I will ask one last time, any rebuttal? Okay, with that, the, we are, this hearing is now closed, and Commissioner Bennett, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think this one is, is, again, we, we, some of these are very complex. This one, I think, is relatively straightforward, and I think the need is there. You know, time will tell as, as the allocations are final, or the costs are finalized, whether the benefits exceed the costs. But I would ask the clerk to read the, read the resolution to proceed to the second hearing.
Resolution number two four dash seven six, in the matter of proceeding with the project survey and design for the Moore Number One, Number Three Six One Watershed Drainage Improvement Petition by Jose Renaro and Anissa Stevano-Renaro and others.
So moved. I'll second it, and I'll just basically, the criteria that we're supposed to work under, whether the proposed improvement is necessary, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvements will be less than the benefits of the improvement. And we'll determine some of those things that will go into the second. As you've already heard, if it's not in the watershed, it won't be included, and that'll be determined between now and the second hearing. And with that, I do support it, and I call for the vote.
Vote on motion two four dash seven six, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And with that, did you have need for executive session?
We do have need for executive session. Resolution number two four dash seven seven, in the matter of adjourned into executive session for consideration of pending or imminent litigation.
So moved.
I second it. Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two four dash seven seven, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.